I'd like to call tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. It is May 4th, 2016, and the time is 7:02. First item is the prayer and pledge. Please stand. If you'll bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving us such a wonderful community to live in. Thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for giving us a great country. Please be with us as we move forward with the business of the city. Please be with our nation's leaders as they guide us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Got a first and second? Did we need to make some changes?
Nine A.
Okay, nine A.
Yeah, I was gonna move to defer those.
Okay. Okay. So, old business, nine A and nine C.
Ten C.
Ten C, sorry. Okay, so do we want to leave? Does that change anything?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna leave them on there just to see in case, and defer them as we came to them. Just in case Commissioner Buscel was able to make it. I don't know if he will or not, but that was, that was my intent, but we can do it however.
No, that's fine if y'all wanna handle it that way. That, and that way if they come in, we can leave it on the agenda. So, we'll approve the agenda as is, and I think I will go ahead and take the moment to let everybody know that Commissioner Buscel's wife is in the hospital, and there's some question on whether or not he could attend. I think he was going to try to, but just keep their family in your prayers, and if he shows up, we'll be glad to have him, so.
Commissioner Sutton will be here as quick as he can, coming from Brooklyn.
Okay, and Commissioner Sutton should be on his way. So, we got a first and second. No more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Third item is citizens' comments, and the first citizen is Mr. Bob Brooks. Please join us.
Mayor, gentlemen, since this is May the 5th, happy Cinco de Mayo. Excuse me. Since we've gotten a lot of notoriety lately on TV and in the newspaper, I had an idea that might be able to add some money to the city coffers. So, I'd like to pitch this movie idea to you. Maybe somebody can, in the industry, could pick it up. I see the title of the movie being Fairview, Tennessee, the Movie: The Incompetent Led by the Unscrupulous. Now, several suggested scenes in this movie, in no particular order, just generally. The first might be the mysterious disappearance of negative personnel records. Interesting topic. Second one might be switcheroo of development plans between the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. Third one, Stuart Johnson misleading the BOC on the Cumberland subdivision. Another one.
How did I do that?
I'm a citizen, I'm making comments.
Well, I'm a commissioner, and I don't wanna watch my son play baseball.
A cloud over the police department. I'd like to point out, that's the second time that commissioner, because he didn't like what was said, has left the bench. I want all citizens to be aware of that. Not only does he lay down at his seat and not pay attention and text, well, I'll just let it there. That is uncalled for, unprofessional, and just irritates far out of me. Another one might be the mistake in the city manager job posting contradicting the BOC and search committee wishes. Questionable hiring practices of the city manager. Another one that I think has probably been addressed, spending more than half a million dollars plus a year, more than we brought in, for operating. For five years in a row. Now, that's just what's on the surface, and that's only half of my list. I won't go into the rest of it, but that's half of my list. If that's just what's on the surface, is this Fairview's iceberg, what else is going on? Now, obviously, this has to be a fictional tale, because no real city could possibly have all of these problems.
Your time's about up, so if you wanna wrap it up?
I'll read a part of my last statement. You say you're trying to fix these problems, yet nothing's changed. How much do the citizens have to endure? Thank you.
That gives us awards and a recognition.
Mayor, there is none tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, let's see, staff comments, well, public announcements. I do have one announcement, and Commissioner Buscel was telling me that Grace Works West is now offering some free legal help, and I know Thursday from 11 to 1, there will be somebody, and then he said, May 7th, 10 to 12. So, if you want more information, feel free to call Grace Works. I'm assuming, he just said Thursday, so I don't know if that was today. So, for sure, the 7th from 10 to 12. But if you do have questions, feel free to call Grace Works. And then, Mr. Hall.
The emission testing from, on Monday and Tuesday, from 7:30 to noon. That's all I have on announcements.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Well, we won't be able to approve the agenda, or approve the, let's go with staff comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Just wanted to let everybody know the trees and the shrubs are in for the Roadscapes project, and hopefully they'll be started planting those next week. That's all I have as far as that.
Okay, and we hope to have some kind of brown, or ceremony.
Ceremony on the 22nd at, I think, was it 2:00 PM on Sunday afternoon?
I think it was 3:00.
3:00, okay.
Yeah. 3:00 o'clock, so if you meet at Bank of America, and we can maybe have an officer to help cross the street.
I can handle that, yes, ma'am.
And then, we'll have the dedication for that, so please join us. Anything else, Mr. Hall?
That's all I have, ma'am.
When did you say that was?
It was the 22nd.
22nd. And I'll find out, I'll correct, I'll send out an email on the time.
Okay.
And that's to honor Dan Cubic.
Yes.
Who was instrumental in starting that project back in 2006.
Okay, great. And then, do you have anything, Ms. Johnson?
I actually have a few things. Excuse me, I wanted to mention that Channel 19, the Comcast feed is down. We're currently working with Comcast to try to get it back up. It is on their side of things, because our feed is going out for E-verse, sorry, I keep changing names. The meeting will be recorded and posted on YouTube as usual, so that you can watch it at a later date. We do have the city manager opening posted, the ending date for that application process is May 31st, and as of today, we have received three applications for that. We will have census verification crews out next, this, next, sorry, next Wednesday, May 11th, and also on the 18th. Those are, I think, what, they said, three or four groups that will be out trying to verify the census. This is kind of our last step before we submit everything to the state for final approval through them. So, if they knock on our door, please help us out, and let's get this verified and taken care of. That's it.
Okay, and then, some, a citizen had told me it still wasn't corrected on the website. I hadn't checked it about the qualification.
It has been corrected. If you, if, and if you'll refresh your browser, make sure you do that, because it will cache what, what you saw before.
Gotcha.
So, please refresh your browser, but it has been corrected. I was out for a couple days, so it took longer.
Okay. Okay, great. Yes.
On the, on the Channel 19, I've had a couple of people lately inquire about whether or not, and I know it's down right now, but when it's back up and running, is it possible to actually replay the meeting?
They are.
They are doing that?
They're scheduled.
Okay, good. Do we know what it is, when it's, when it's replayed? We don't know. Can we find out so we can announce that or post it? Because I've been asked that a couple times.
It may be posted on our website.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I can.
Well, and it used to be when you would go through the feed of the slideshow, it would, one of the slides would have the times that were replayed, yeah.
The current system that we have does not rebroadcast on Channel 19.
Can it?
Oh.
There was something that Andrew, when he, he changed, upgraded some of the stuff, we weren't able to be able to do it automatically, so.
Can we find out before the next meeting or the next one, what it would take to make that happen?
Yes.
Can you do that? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that gives Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. Just been very busy finalizing figures, and, and, and we'll hopefully, well, should be, we're very close. We'll get things out to you guys tomorrow. Let's see, there was one other thing, but, oh, yeah. Scheduled preliminary meeting with the auditors in June, and looking forward to that. That's all I have for right now.
Mr. Paisley, do you have anything?
Star Lake Jam, May 6th, 6:30 to 9, gates open at 6:00. Headliner would be Medlyn Garcia.
Okay, she's very good. She's one of our Westwood Principals' daughter, so she's very talented. If y'all can make it. And then, the next thing will be approval of agenda, and luckily, Commissioner Sutton has walked in, so we can now move forward.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry about that. All the half-day camps for summer camps are full. We still have a few spots for the older camps, so they're filling up quick. If you wanna get your children in, please fill out the applications.
Okay, so you're still taking applications. Just to catch you up, we are approval of the minutes, so glad you made it.
Sorry for being late.
Oh, no, thanks. Fine, okay, yes.
If I might, before we go any further, I'd just like to have a statement for the record to say that we had a quorum when the meeting started, we lost the quorum, we now have a quorum, and that no action was taken that required approval of the board during the time that, that you were absent of quorum.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. What did I say we're at? Approval of the minutes? And then, that'll take us to the consent agenda, so.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, have a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. That brings us to old business.
Mayor, if I can, make a motion that we suspend A-B. No, I'm sorry, just A, since it's Commissioner Bisel, and he's not here tonight.
Okay.
And also, if you wanna go ahead and, I think that, I think that was it, though, yeah.
We just deferring it, is that what you're saying? Yeah, I second.
Okay, we have a first and a second to defer. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Old business, B, discuss and take action on city manager hiring, and that is me. Just put this on the agenda, and we're gonna keep it on the agenda, just to give us the opportunity to discuss items. One of the discussions that has, that the city recorder sent out is how to handle the applicants. She's gonna have to deduct, you know, personal information. I know some people were fine with the names, and then, some people liked the suggestion of, you know, just doing some kind of system, a numbering system. So, I did wanna take a opportunity and for us to kinda discuss what we think the best way for she can move forward, 'cause it's gonna take some time to do that.
Well, if I can, I think the, the board that we put together for a selection committee to help us with that, they're basically gonna just be looking at the qualifications of the individuals, not necessarily where they live, where they're from, or what their names are, qualifications, education, all those type of things. So, I think the least amount of private information, if you wanna say that, that we give out to anybody would be better. If Brandy could take care of that, but I think we've had a discussion on what, and ideas that we had, so that would be my suggestion.
And I'm, I'm fine with the idea. I think it was a good idea. My concern was, is just that some on the committee may get information to the exclusion of others on the committee, and that's just based on past experience. I don't wanna go back down that road of what that experience is, but as long as Brandy's the one that's taking in the applications, and that information is not being disseminated to anyone else, and it's gonna be kept confidential to everyone, then I don't, I don't have a problem with it. That was my only concern.
Yeah, when we originally got the email, I personally was like, you know, names are fine, you know. I said, I think I responded names and state. You know, I'd hate for somebody to get excluded, 'cause they lived in Fairview, or not get included, or because they lived in, you know, another state, or something like that. So, the more I thought about it, I did think it would be probably the fairest way. I know my husband said that's what they do at their, in the beginning stages. The first round, you look at numbers, and you have no idea. Then after the second, once it's been narrowed down, then they put names. So, I don't know, I know there was some concern about maybe we, trying to show transparency, and by, in some way, taking, showing the people the names or their personal information might not be as transparent, and I can see that as a valid point. But, you know, I think sometimes when you take gender, and you take the names, and you just look at their skills and their experience, it might be the best way. So, I'm kinda changing my mindset and thinking that, you know, at least for this initial, you know, to get it narrowed down to 10 or whatever, and then it could be disclosed to the committee. It's not that the committee can't know their names, you know, or that we don't want that, but it's just in the initial process of weeding out people that maybe didn't have the job qualifications. So, I kinda think I agree that that might be the best way, and then, once they get it down to, say, 10, you know, then they can, you know, maybe consider the names or can be given. It's not an issue of transparency at all. It's about getting the most qualified person in there with no strings, you know, attached, or, and, and there is on the application now, we have added, right, that they, they have to disclose any family members if they apply. Has that been added to? I know there was some discussion that that was added to the application, so, you know, if that's being done, I don't know that there's anything else to talk about. I think that that's probably the fairest way to do it.
Yeah, I think certainly from, at the preliminary stages of this, then, you know, I think that's the, a great way to do it. I would like, once it gets narrowed down, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, and I don't know that we have to take any action on it tonight, but something I still want us to think about, is that once it does get narrowed down to the point where we're ready to interview as a board, then I would like to send that back to the committee again, after those interviews have been conducted, to give the committee, that group of citizens one, one more ranking. That necessarily mean we have to agree with that, or take who they rank number one, but just get their insight on those, those candidates, so.
Well, and I think it's, like we said earlier, that it would, I mean, my opinions on paper, what I thought of, the individuals versus when they actually interviewed, I had a little bit of a change, so I think that's fair and only human nature, 'cause sometimes it's not about the paper, it's trying to see who's gonna be a good fit, and who's gonna invest in our community, and you can't always tell that, so. And qualifications are, you know, important, but gotta get somebody you can work well with. Okay, any other comments on this? Does anything else on the search? Not just the, nope?
I do have one question.
Where all have we posted?
I don't have that with me, so I'll try off the top of my head. We did the TML website, and it's gonna be published in the TML paper that comes out bi-monthly. I think it comes out next week. We've got the MTAS website, the Tennessee Association of, what's the?
City Manager.
City Manager, Tennessee City Manager Association.
And the International.
And the International City Manager Association. We did advertising the Tennessee in this past Sunday, and then, of course, our website, so.
And, and did all of those posts, are they all consistent with what's on the website?
All of the posts only had the brief description and referred everyone to our website for the full description.
Good, okay, good.
So, that was the only change that needed to be made.
Good.
Okay, thank you, and that'll bring us to C. Discuss and take action, what, were, were you gonna remove that one, too? No?
No, I think that's.
Okay, yeah, okay. Discuss and take action on resolution number 06-16. A resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting a city policy related to expanding the City of Fairview, Tennessee corporate boundaries outside the boundaries of Williamson County, Tennessee. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. We were approached a few weeks ago by the East Hickman representative there, Wayne Tomlinson, who is in attendance tonight, wanting to know if we had any ambition of annexing into the Hickman County line, so I'm gonna let Larry refer to the resolution that, you know, that we don't have any interest in doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I drew the resolution such that we could not say that the city would never have any interest in something like that, because you can't make those kind of commitments. But what I did say in the resolution was that the city at this, it's the city policy until it's changed by this board or future board, that they, the city has no interest in expanding outside the boundaries of Williamson County at this time, and would not until this board or some future board either repealed the resolution or adopted another resolution to do something else which would by implication repeal it. And that should satisfy the requirement of the statute, that the city has no objection to them doing what they wanna do.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and item D, discuss and take action on Cumberland Drive Development. And I'm kinda thinking about deferring it, since we don't have a full board. My purpose of putting it on the agenda was to discuss the process of the meeting and kinda what occurred and what was said, but I don't know that I kinda would like a full board here.
Well, if it helps, had you not, had you not put this on the agenda, I probably was gonna put it on the agenda, because I, I am and was very interested in how the process played out in January, when this was brought to the, to the attention of the board or before the board. You know, I mean, I think the, the video, I don't know that if you're gonna play the clip of the video, but I think the video sort of speaks for itself.
Well, I guess what we could do is still go through the process, and we decide there's something that needs to be, take ash, action, we could wait, I don't know.
I'd be glad to let you know what I've got worked out, as far as the things that wasn't addressed, that they are willing to, to do, and two meetings that I've had with them since, since the last meeting.
Okay.
They're gonna do a black vinyl fence around the detention pond. They're gonna do a landscape buffer around the detention ponds. They're gonna have trees every 40 feet along, along Cumberland, and I might suggest to them, I haven't done this yet, but I might suggest to them to utilize our red bud tree, that is our city tree, maybe along with some dogwoods mentioned, mixed in, so that they won't be overflowing out into the street. They're gonna do an extra nice landscaping at the entrance. Good house, good landscaping along the houses, there's four houses that will have the driveways on Cumberland there, and these are all brick houses that I requested by. on Cumberland there, and these are all brick houses that I requested back in staff a long time ago. The traffic study has already been done for the first entrance, and what's before the planning commission next Tuesday is the first phase, which addresses the planning commission, the traffic study at that time. And like I said, there's all brick homes along the Cumberland. You know, so if, only thing that I, they kind of don't want to do is put a landscape buffer along hiding the houses that they, you know, to kind of showcase, showcasing their houses with their, with all brick and everything. So that's kind of where, where they're at there. They would like not to do that. As far as the second traffic study, that'll be in another phase. And according to Wilt this morning, he seems to think that instead of being right at that curve, that road will be moved over within the interior park portion of the development itself to be farther enough away from that particular curve that's there. But that'll be a traffic study that will be there. Also, I might suggest that I'm working very hard on coming up with a program to get us a light at Cumberland and 100, which has been needed for a long time. Hopefully, if we can get this done. I'm not going to let you know where I'm at tonight on it because it may not come out until the, till the middle of the summer. But that would be huge to help this whole development in this whole area. So I do have a, a good source of where we can get the money to take care of that.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you've been working hard and they're trying to work with you. So at least the two lot sizes and the barrier that is not, is there anything else that will?
The, the streets will be exiting on the interior roads, the other, the, the other lots that are not our acre lot. Those four will be acre lots.
Okay.
And they will be the, you know, but the planning commission's thing was fencing around the pond, which we all agree in these, but I've got them to do the nice fencing, and they're going to do the landscape buffer to kind of hide the detention pond. So that's, was a couple of the commissioners, planning commissioners' concerns there.
Okay. Yes.
So out of the 13 points in the engineer's letter, all of them are?
It takes care of everything but the buffer.
Okay.
Everything is taken care of.
And the two lots, though, I thought those were still, the end lots weren't quite acres.
We had the one lot that was turned, they said.
They're going to be turned with side garages and, and their, their exit will be on, into the interior street.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they didn't consider that one as far as what we talked about?
They're not an acre lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they were supposed to be.
We checked on that this morning, they're not acre lots.
The thing that concerned me the most about how the process went down with us approving this PUD was is just the information that we received on the night that this was before the board.
I know. And I'm addressing that too, that he gets those, that information to us quicker. And it just so happens that night Larry and I didn't have a copy of it.
Well, we, we, I'm just, I'm sorry, part of this can be solved by us having Will here at any hearings that we have approving a PUD.
It's just so expensive.
That's the thing.
I can handle it, you know, I done talked to John and he and I, and Will's going to help. He's going to let me know, Wayne, you got a PUD tonight, it needs to be done this way. But Will's problem is that he hasn't been involved with the Board of Commissioners, only with the, with the planning commission. So when, when these things come up, he wasn't usually involved with, in the past with approval by the Board of Commissioners.
Well, I don't care if he's here or not, but we need to make sure that he signs off on it before we get up here and approve it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I have a suggestion, Mr. Hall, and it would be fairly easily to do. I think one of the reasons this thing went down was, like Mr. Hall said, is I'm not sure that, that the commission had all the documents that was there. I, I understand that it was somewhat of a fervor to try to, to help a citizen get something done. But I would suggest to the board that if something like that happens in the future, and I'm not trying to place blame for anything, I'm just saying if that happens in the future, either do one of two things because it would have been simple. I could have said, hey, let's wait a minute, either recess for 10 minutes to slow down and ascertain what you've actually got and what you need, or say, look, we didn't get this till we walked up here, we're going to defer it to the next meeting. Because no one should be asked to, to make a decision on something of that magnitude when I just hand you this and say, what do you think about it? The second thing is, I suggest, and this would be a simple thing to do on the, on the agenda, is when you have a PUD, like it says, R20 PUD, R15 PUD, is put the, the letters, P U D, in bold type and double underline it because it's really easy to look there and say, that's an R20. Oh, well, R20, no problem, you get the zoning, you bring the plan back later. It's been said many, many times, and there's not anyone up there on that board or not anyone back here that doesn't know if you've got a PUD, when you prove, approve that plan, you've approved the zoning. Now, there's something that, that I'll tell you tonight, and I'm sure you're aware of this, but it won't hurt to say it again. Once you approve that preliminary plan or the plat or that final plat, there are certain vested interest rights that go to that developer for periods of years up to 10, depending on what he does. But once you've acted on that, whether it's, cities normally and governments have a, a right to correct mistakes, but if you take a mistake and vote, I as the person who is sitting here have a right to rely on that. And that vested right becomes something that the courts, if you got into that, and I'm glad Mr. Hall did a great job of this, getting to where nobody's going to really suffer from this, I think, but if you weigh those vested rights, courts always determine if it comes to a position of equipoise, who is the person who's in the best position to keep this from happening? In a situation like this, it's always going to be whatever board is voting on that. So, you know, I'm not sitting here trying to point fingers at anybody because there's enough blame to go around for everybody, including me. But I just think it would be smart that in the future, if, if I was here in the street and somebody handed me something and said, what do you think of this? Well, I don't think anything of it because I don't know what's in there. So either take a recess for 15 minutes, that's fine, that's certainly within your prerogative, or if it's handed to you at the last minute, just say, you know, we'll, we'll take this up to the next meeting.
Well, if we watch the tape, you'll see, you know, that some of us tried, you know, Commissioner Crutcher pretty much tried to say no until these things, let's use the city engineer's recommendation, and it got a little confusing.
Well, that, that's where you probably, somebody needs to say, you know.
But nobody did. That's my biggest problem, is not, not either y'all, not us. I don't think we realize, the conversation got so diluted and confusing that nobody caught it. And that's the problem. Go ahead.
Got a couple of points I want to make. I, I mean, I don't think the conversation really was confusing. I mean, what I think happened was, is that, Mr. Cantrell, you told us exactly what to do at the beginning of this video clip, you told us exactly what to do. Defer this, send it back to the planning commission, let them deal with these 13 issues, and then it come back to the board, which was the motion that I made, which ultimately was seconded by Mayor Carroll, which was ultimately voted on, and the motion died. And then somehow, in the middle of that conversation, because you just, you just stated exactly what, what it is, and you stated you approved the, the PUD or approved the development, you approved the zoning. Well, the way I understand it, I think it, I think of it the other way around, if we approved the zoning, which is what they're asking for that night, the, the plan, the plat comes with the zoning, and it becomes part of that, comes, becomes part of the zoning.
It, it becomes the zoning.
It becomes the zoning, and we're now bound.
But unfortunately, you're absolutely right, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but unfortunately, it didn't get, it didn't, it didn't get from here to here in the same context.
Well, and then what happened that night was, is somehow the conversation turned to tonight, all we're dealing with is zoning. And in fairness, when you watch it, you acquiesced with that. You said, yes, you can't, you can't approve zoning with a contingency. Well, I was never worried about contingencies. I don't even know why contingencies came up that night. I was never suggesting that we approve the zoning with a contingency. What I was suggesting was, is your, what you, the advice you gave us, let's send it back to the planning commission because they're better equipped to deal with this, and we shouldn't be dealing with this tonight. I would like to, I think it's, it's good exercise and a learning experience for us to watch and, and just see how that process went down. Because the thing with PUDs is I understand them, and I've done some research on them since then. With PUDs, we as a board and the planning commission have a lot of ability to negotiate with developers, a lot of ability when it comes to a PUD. And, you know, I would have liked to have seen them be willing to put that traffic light at the end of Cumberland, if, if they were going to build that large development on Cumberland Drive. That was, that was something, and I know that wasn't one of Will's 13 points that night. But I never realized, and it was said multiple times, that we were not approving the final plat that night, that it was not a done deal, that it was going to come back to us at the development stage. Had I realized that, I would have never voted for that ultimately. And we rely on the advice of the codes director, of the city attorney, or whoever it is that we're getting advice from, depending on the issue, to give us sound advice. And that night, I don't feel like I got it. I mean, because I'm not, I don't know the ins and outs of, of zoning and codes, I don't. There's people getting paid to give me that advice so that I can make an informed decision. And I didn't get it, I didn't get the advice that I needed that night to make an informed decision. And I, I voted yea, and it's my fault, I own it. Because had I do it, had I to do it over again, I would not have voted for that that night. I would have stuck to my guns and said, let's not, no, let's defer this back to, to the planning commission. But for whatever reason, it had to be pushed through that night. You know, it was all about depriving a property owner of their rights, and I don't want to do that. But in the process, we, we jeopardized the integrity of, of the development and the things that our city engineer, who we pay good money to give us advice, had suggested needed to be done. So I, I'm very disappointed in how the process went that night.
I, you didn't vote for it. I, I mean, I, I don't think, we voted, me, you did a first, first, you made amended motion, Tony seconded it, then there was discussion, after that, he removed it to keep it on the floor because you didn't want to remove, I seconded it. We did, to send it back to Will, the two of us voted for it, three nays. So, and you didn't. But go ahead, if you don't mind, play the tape. I mean, I agree, I just, this is not to, I just think we need to see, to learn, that way we don't ever make this. I did ask, Mr. McCoy did a version, and I just, because it did have everything together, I asked him to make it Board of Commissioners appropriate, but it is his, you'll see some similarity just because the, you know, headlines. Just figured no need to do it again. So if you'll play it.
After watching the planning commission meeting from last week about the subdivision on Cumberland Drive, I watched the January 7th B O C meeting again. I could not tell if Mr. Hall presented the new plan and failed to tell the board it was different, if Mr. Cantrell did not give an adequate answer to the board in order for them to make an informed decision, or if Commissioner Johnson intentionally misled the board with his explanations. With all of the years of experience the three of them have, I do not believe this was accidental. If you ever want to regain the trust of the citizens again, you have to follow the rules, pay attention to the details, and have consequences for improper actions. Thank you.
I just do feel like those are the kind of mistakes that we don't need to be making. And I feel like that I was probably really disappointed, A, that I didn't catch it, but B, we set ourselves up and nobody pointed it out either. And me and Mr. Hall had that conversation today, and we definitely need to make sure that we are putting steps in place. Because I really felt deceived in a way because of the conversation that went on, and all these years of experience for nobody to call it out. There were several board members that clearly from the tape did not realize the difference with the PUD versus that we were doing a final, we just felt like it was a rezoning.
Defer this until the meet, the board commissioners' meeting after the planning commission has met, and then you've got all your contingencies, you've had a chance to go through, I guess, staff review with that, and then you'll have everything that you need to make an intelligent decision. And we don't create problems for them, we don't create problems for us by having it bounced here and there.
I would like to amend the motion to defer this until after it's gone back to the planning commission to deal with the issues that the city engineer raised.
Second.
Okay, have a first and second on the amended motion. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to still ask the attorney the questions that, that I had.
I will do.
Before we vote, please.
Yes.
I think Larry was heading down the right path, but I think you got, you got deterred a little bit because I, I don't really think this rezoning has anything whatsoever to do with the developer. We have a property owner that has come to us and asked for a rezoning. And I don't see how we can tell them that we're not going to rezone it now because we want to go back and let the planning commission decide whether or not the developer has met it or not. We have a property owner that wants it, no matter what, whether he's selling it to these people or not, he wants his property rezoned.
Excuse me, that's not what, if that's the way it came out, that's what I meant. If you want to vote to rezone it, you have every right to do it. What I'm saying is, don't rezone it with a contingency.
Well, I don't, I don't know that anybody was going to rezone it with contingencies, and I think that's completely wrong. I think we're on a fine line of violating Mr. Green's rights here by not rezoning it just because we're wanting to tie it to what the engineer did. And the, that all needs to be discussed with the planning commission. I think it's a disservice to Mr. Green as a property owner in Fairview if we don't vote for this tonight.
I, I agree. I don't have any problem with you rezoning it. Where I have the problem is if you rezone it and put a contingency on it, I'm not sure you can put a contingency on it.
I don't think you can either.
I don't think you can.
They don't, they don't go together.
And it's your call if you, whether you rezone it or you don't rezone it.
But this board has the final authority over this engineer document. It goes back to the planning commission. And even if they don't get it right there, it still has to come back to the five of us, and we can tell them, no, Mr. Green's property is rezoned to what you want it to be, but you didn't do what this paper says, so we're not letting you build. I think we need to vote for the rezoning tonight because it has nothing to do with this.
I don't think you can do that. If you read the case of B and B versus the City of Lebanon, you can't do that. You can either, you can rezone it or you can not rezone it. But, well, my, my point was, and I probably didn't express it properly, obviously I didn't, because it didn't come across to you. I know Doc suggests that you rezone it with a contingency.
I agree with that.
Because I don't think it means anything.
Hang on, Mr. Hall, I'm sorry, I had already given this, Commissioner Crutcher.
Well, that's why my initial question was, is it appropriate to address these things in terms of rezoning? And I think the answer is no. But where I was going with the rest of my, my questions was more about the zoning in and of itself and the fact that it was going to be as close to another R15 and that there was regulations in terms of how close those developments could be to one another.
But that's just straight R15s.
Understand.
With the, all the amenities.
I get the difference, but the issue is, is if you don't want two R15s that close to one another because, and they're less dense than this, then why would you want?
Your ordinance didn't say that.
Well, I, I understand. I'm just going, I'm trying to understand the thinking behind it.
Well, we can't rezone it with a contingency, we can't read things into the ordinance that's not there.
I, I never sent anybody contingencies. I don't know where you're coming up with that, using that word. I just said, I don't understand the thinking behind why.
Well, I think the, the thing, a role is.
Yeah, I, I think the contingency thing is coming in because the engineer.
Forget that.
He tied it to it, which is not right.
Well, I don't think he tied, I think he just gave us recommendations.
I don't know that he realized what, he's, he's doing his job on telling us what it needs to be done, and he just said, we could do that. He didn't say it had to be done or anything. But really, that should go to the planning commission.
He being the engineer, is that you're talking?
Right, yes, sir. That's, that's how the document reads.
Yeah, I'm saying from a standpoint.
Everywhere where it says B O C approval, it really should say planning commission. Now, it's going to come back to us for final approval, and we could deal with it then, but.
Well, from a development standpoint, it's going to come back to us.
Correct, and that's what this deals with, everything having to do with the development, not the rezoning.
Ms. Johnson, you look like you had something.
For what it's worth, I just wanted to, I don't know that the recommendation from the planning commission was in your packet this time, and the, the motion for their approval was contingent upon that engineer report changes, just so you know.
You can do that in planning commission because their motion was, they would recommend to the Board of Commissioners, but they wanted this stuff done because it comes back to the board of commissioners, but they wanted this stuff done, because it comes back to them. But, I just want to be sure that you understand, I think, I may have misunderstood your point, but you can rezone it or you can not rezone it, but you can't do it with a contingency.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, I'd just like to add that these contingencies will, or these recommendations will be issued in the resubmital from the people of the Old South to the staff, and we'll address those in staff, hopefully to get those ironed out before it actually goes to the planning commission. And rather than the red lines, hopefully they'll be, that they've addressed these issues in the proper way.
Any other discussion? Do you have something else, Commissioner?
No.
For me, just the basic question is, tonight, we're just voting to rezone the property, period. Is that correct, Larry? Nothing else? No contingencies? No nothing? Okay. I withdraw my second.
Do you want to withdraw yours?
It doesn't have a second now.
Well, I can second it. I second it.
No, I'm not withdrawing.
Okay. So, it has a first and second on amended. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amended motion? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, the amended motion dies?
The lots facing the road, are they all now one-acre lots?
I believe so, yes, sir. I got to double-check that. I got...
That was one of the requirements, I believe, that when we passed that, it would be one-acre lots, and supposed to have a buffer zone.
One-acre lots, the one and two, I keep reading my numbers, but the two in the middle, I believe, are, there's four that are acre, the two that are on each side of the entrances will face the other way, and I believe they're less than an acre.
Yeah, that...
Yeah, it looks like 48, 195, and 196 are all shy of an acre.
Yeah. Yeah, our request was that any lot that's on Cumberland Drive be one acre, and have a, forget the width or the length of the buffer area between Cumberland and those homes, but does anybody have that information?
I can add some insight into that. I don't have that specific information. Those items were brought to the attention of the BOC by way of written comments that were still outstanding when they considered the second final reading for the PUD rezoning, which, as you know, includes the preliminary master development plan. The BOC approved the preliminary master development plan as presented to them without any notations of my comments to them. So, while the planning commission did pass along a recommendation for approval based on those changes, the board of commissioners approved the rezoning application in the PUD and the preliminary master development plan without discussion or mention of those comments.
Okay. Well, the PUD is just, I mean, being preliminary, it's just a zoning of it, it's not necessarily how the subdivision is laid out, is that correct?
Not for PUDs.
Well, the plat becomes part of the zoning.
When you have a PUD rezoning, and the preliminary master development plan is before you, it is a part of that rezoning. And when you rezone something with a PUD designation, that preliminary master development plan is what's approved, and that is the zoning. That's why we have attempted to go through very stringent comments and discussion on the layouts that are shown in those preliminary master development plans for PUDs.
If I'm recalling correctly, this is not the plat that we seen last time. I don't think lots 1, 2, 49, and 50 were this big on the original plan.
Has adjusted some. So, what was voted, was this one voted on, or was the original that we saw?
This is the one that was presented to the BOC. And then, I had been asked to review that and provide any remaining comments based on this revision, because, Mr. Mangrum, you're correct. They did revise 1, 2, 49, and 50 to be one-acre lots. My understanding is, the applicant's interpretation of one-acre lots fronting Cumberland Drive, this is their interpretation, was any lot that actually accessed Cumberland Drive. The lots that access the interior streets, they did not view as fronting Cumberland Drive, and therefore, that's why those revisions weren't made, to make those one acre, at least one acre. And there was never, there was never a revised document submitted showing any type of buffer or landscaping plan along.
It's concerning to me that we would approve something and something different would be shown or presented at the BOC. I don't understand that.
I want an answer to the chairman of the planning commission's question. I mean, that's what I'd like to know the answer to. How...
I'll try to get that information, have it Tuesday night at the planning commission for us. One thing I'd like to add, this brought back a lot of memories of the Brownland Farms. These should have been amendments to the PUD. That's what we submitted back in those days, there were recommendations from the planning commission, because I was on the planning commission at that time, as well as on the board of commissioners. I brought my 13 amendments to Darryl Mangrum to read into the record for the PUD zoning. And that's what should have been done here. It's brought back to this, brought back a lot of memories of that night, you know, so. Sorry I didn't catch that that night, but, you know, with all the other discussion and debate that was going on, I failed to think about that at that night. But I'll find out why there was two different submittals. You know, I think one was a preliminary, and possibly the other one was a master plan. I think that's the difference.
Well, what was clear to me about that video and how that transaction went down that night, was there was nothing unequivocal about the fact that we believed, and it was stated to us unequivocally, that that was just zoning. And that it was not final.
It was also stated in our first reading, too. Y'all, that was part of that tape. I don't remember that being first reading. Did y'all have a first read?
Apparently, it was a second reading.
Yep. Did y'all have a first reading? Do y'all remember?
Yeah, we did, I think we did have a first reading on that. Because I recall discussing it the first time that it came through, and I don't think I've...
Same response.
Well, I know we had a first reading, because if you watch the rest of that tape, which is why I think ultimately I voted for the ultimate, the motion to pass it, I think I did vote for that. Because there was discussion after that about what the vote was, the first read, because it was unanimous, the first read, and then Stuart and I had an exchange about why that was relevant. So, that was definitely the second time that it had come before the board, so it was for final read. But, you know, the way it looks, just from watching that, either, one, we don't know what we're doing, or, two, some know what they're doing to the exclusion of others and taking that, using that to their advantage. I mean, that's what it looks like. Neither of those two are good. Either of them. So, you know, I'm like Mayor Carroll. I mean, I feel deceived. I mean, I'm glad that you're able to work out some of the issues, but that process angers me.
Well, it shouldn't have happened. It should have been called before. I just think whatever we get needs to be signed off by the city engineer. And it'd be, whatever, his approval, yes, this is it. They've met all the criteria from the planning commission. So, when we look at that, we'll know that.
I mean, basically, if it would have gone back and everything would have been done, then we wouldn't be sitting here. So, obviously, they resubmitted a plan at some time that the planning commission had never even seen.
Exactly.
And, you know, at least three of the commissioners up here wouldn't have seen the first one, because they don't have a packet, you know. The vice mayor, myself, at least saw, but we didn't get a full packet that night. We just got a rendering, you know, and it was not to the same extent. So, all we had to go off of was the engineer's recommendation.
This came in at almost 2:00 in the afternoon, 1:57, the night of the meeting.
Well, if that's the case, then how did the planning commission, based off what Ms. Johnson read into the record that night, how did they make an approval with those contingencies? If it just came in that day?
This came in for the board of commissioners' meeting on the 7th of January.
But would those not have been the same contingencies?
These were the, these were their suggestions at the planning commission stage. These were. These were like amendments or contingencies that should have been added to the PUD.
But I thought that was what was, I thought that the planning commission approved contingent upon the recommendations of the city engineer.
It states it right.
And that would have been well before the day of our meeting that that occurred. So, I'm trying to figure out, if they had those contingencies then, then why did we just get them at 2:00 on the day of our meeting?
Well, I think they had come back and made some of the, they, between the staff review, they had done some of the things they agreed to. So, those were what were left. Or was it the exact same 14? I don't know.
7:10, proof contingencies, items, all lots, Cumberland, minimum one acre, lots on Cumberland, side entrance, garages, third lot just, I was shown this morning, that was the planning commission was voting, showed anything out here on Cumberland. It's just, we had all these lots out here on Cumberland, but it was more of a, like I said, that's what it was.
Was that the first thing that went to the planning commission?
In no way.
Okay, so that's the first thing that went to... Okay.
And they were sending forth their recommendations at that point. This is what the others addressed, this recommendations, and Will gets his resubmital or his engineering review. Like I said, I've got them all addressed, except for the planning state. They were there trying to work with us, and that, you know, where we were at at that.
Is there any chance that when they do the second traffic study, that that would result in a traffic light at the end of that road, or them having any connection to that at all, or is that just out of the question? But what I'm saying is...
That's required, that they have to do it.
I understand, but is the traffic study closer in proximity to the actual development, or will they consider the main entryway to that road leading to the development off of Highway 100?
Commonwealth Drive and City.
Right.
It's like I put out, the limit to have brick homes. It'd be nice to have your showcase homes. As a staff, I can get some, like, dinner, like, this could get.
I mean, it's already a nightmare to get out of Cumberland Drive or Crow Cut, turning left, or really turning any direction, or going across. I mean, so if you put 250 homes on that road, I can't imagine what it's going to be like to get out of Cumberland Drive. Or, what'll happen is, is that traffic will just go over to Chester Road and now be backed up at that light. So, again, that's one of those things, that we, we've taken this position, and I've said this several times in the past, we've taken this position of being very developer-friendly and very, and trying to assist our citizens in selling their property to developers, and that's fine. But we don't need to do that to the detriment of the citizens as a whole. I mean, certainly, if Mr. Green wanted to sell his property and it be developed, then he has every right to do that. But I don't think it's incumbent upon us to, you know, force that through, to make that occur. I mean, I think we need to take a better posture in negotiating with these developers on these projects. And it just seems like we're just going to, let's just get it through. This is rezoning, let's just get it through. And I...
I didn't have any intention of doing any of that, from my standpoint.
Well, I'm not saying you did. I'm just saying, that's what, it just seems like that that's sort of the MO of the board. And I don't, you know, that's why I'm very, after being up here for over a year and a half now, I'm skeptical because of how things have been conducted. If history is any indication of the future, I'm skeptical. And that's, I don't like that. I wish I wasn't as skeptical about everything that comes before us as I am. And I feel like I have to double-check and question, and it's because of things like this.
Well, and I think there, a lot of it, especially when it comes to the codes and the rezonings and stuff like that, a lot of it, you know, which Will says a lot, I'm just telling you what your code is. I'm just telling you. And that's what we need. We expect the paid staff and people to be able to point these out, and they see that we're going in the wrong direction, guide us in the right direction. And, you know, even, you know, and I don't really know what happened. I mean, I think we all have to take a considerable amount of blame, just because we should have known, so it's not a pointing finger kind of thing. But, at some point in time, it went from just the way it evolved, and the conversation, even Ms. Johnson tried to read back what, I mean, what it said. And that, I mean, it just, but the conversation just evolved to go one way, and I don't really know how that happened. You know, I think Larry started off giving us the right direction, and then it just went to left field. And you can even see Tony saying that, just as clarification before we went to the vote, "This is just the rezoning, correct?" I mean, he said that. And he was told, "Yes." So, whose fault is it? You know, I think it was said many times that, so, you know, "Yeah, let's find ways." I'm all for finding ways to fix it. Let's put safeguards in place where this never happens again. Of course, we want to do that, but at some point in time, until you watch those videos, do you see that no wonder we feel deceived in a way, or misled? Not that anybody was doing it intentionally, I hope not, but, you know, it's sure, you know, is interesting once you put it all together. We need safeguards. We're running into this with the tree commission, those conversations have been had. We need those checklists and points, and, you know, I just think that it's too crucial. We're in too crucial of time for the growth of our city, not to make sure that we're doing it right. And I really want us to take this, and we can't undo it. I mean, yeah, we can reverse the vote, but then we'd end up in a lawsuit. And Mr. Hall's done a good job of trying to go, you know, discuss with them and see what we can salvage, but we shouldn't have to do that. It should have been done right the first time. You know, we could have, I had said many times that I was wanting the traffic study, and was going to require the traffic study to be Cumberland on Highway 100. I'm never going to get that opportunity, so now I got to hope. But we could have asked them to do that in the original phases. Now, obviously, you've done a good job of discussing with them and getting them to agree to stuff, maybe they will come, but we missed opportunities. to stuff, maybe they will come, but we missed opportunities by not knowing exactly what Any other thoughts, or? I just wanted us to, only way you're ever going to learn from your mistakes is to recognize them. And as a board, you know, if we need to, you know, do something to prepare, you know, that we need to discuss that, too. I mean, I took, I already said, on a public platform, I take a lot of blame myself, just because I've been on the Planning Commission for a long time. And, you know, but you just don't have a lot of PUDs come along and, you know, from meeting to meeting, it, and then when the conversations were going different directions, I have to own my part, and I should have been able to call it right then and there. I didn't, because it went a different direction, but it's no excuse. Okay, since there's no vote, we will move forward. New business, discuss and take action on 2016-11. Ordinance number nine two five, an ordinance for, to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget fiscal year 2015-16 budget. Starlight Jam, Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. The Parks Department would like to take $300 out of their donations to pay for the entertainment at the Starlight Jam.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. New business, number B.
Discuss or take action on impact fee. Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask that we defer this with a little bit of explanation behind it, directly for the city manager. Wayne, this is, everything I've read, and I agree with just about everything that's sent in, as far as way Spring Hill did it, a couple of exceptions to it. But this is 1995 study, and fees that they had, they've got to be an update since 1995.
Since I've sent that out to y'all, I've actually talked back to Spring Hill. They actually had a staff engineer do that study, and it is going to have to be an engineer of some sort to do it, because if it ever got challenged and we didn't have it stamped engineered, then we would be in, you know, a problem with it. So I do have a request out for possibly two estimates on an impact study here. And as soon as I get those, I'll put them on the agenda for y'all.
You think we'll get it back by next meeting?
I'm hoping so. I feel sure one of them will get back with me.
That would, that'd be fine. I just want to let people know why I was saying to defer it, so.
But when I've checked with them, and I, after going back and going further, other cities had had Gresham Smith do some of their impact studies, and the key to it is, and Larry can interfere, I mean, if he wants to put his input into it, I'd be welcome for that. But it, it does make sense. If it was, if it was challenged, then we would, wouldn't have our backup, so to speak, because we don't have anybody on staff that's capable of, of doing that.
Excited to be its back?
Yeah, okay.
That's all I have on.
And we're going to defer that item?
Till next meeting.
Till the next meeting. And then we deferred C, because Commissioner Bissell is not here. So that brings us to D, and that's discuss and/or take action.
Before we move, before we move forward, can I ask a question to the city manager? Did we get the, the tap from Dixon Gannon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me explain that a little bit further, too, in my talking to them today also. In the letter from Dr. Rice, he was requesting possibly a second tap for the Farmers Market in the future, because they're requesting handicap bathrooms adjacent to the Farmers Market. Well, one tap will serve both the History Village and that, too, so we won't have to buy two. We can only have to have one there, so.
I just, I knew that was the most important part of it.
That was the most important part. And the, Michael Rogers told me today that one would take care of that.
So is it 17,000 for one or two?
No, if we get one, it won't be that much money. Most of it's going to be running the lines, I think.
Okay. It's going to be a lot less than what we're looking at here, I believe.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, and that brings us to discuss and take action on expiring board seats. Brandy had asked me if I wanted to put that in there, and I agree, just because we probably need to go ahead and run the advertisement, and then we have, you know, I just kind of want it in, in the record, too, and we can contact these board members. But we have three planning commission seats opened. Lisa Anderson, Matt Biata, and Tim Mangrum expires June 30th. Then a Board of Zoning Appeals, that's Lisa Anderson, Wayne Lowman. And then that's, they're all jeans. So, and then we have two on the industrial board, and a beer, and one on park board, and two on the tree commission. So I guess, Ms. Johnson, if you'll just contact these individuals and let them know their seat is expiring, and then maybe we can run one ad, you know, letting them know that there's open seats.
When would you like to try to have that back on the agenda? The first meeting in June?
Yeah, that's good. Great.
We need to make sure that these people that are on this list now understand that they need to get a, a letter of interest in, along with just not assumption of it.
Right, I will contact them by certified mail, so that we make sure that that's done.
Thank you.
Okay, good deal. So no action being taken on that, that'll move us to the city manager's discussion.
Mayor, I have nothing. The only thing I'd like to let you know is I'll be out getting my second eye done on Monday.
You see me?
I can say great now. It's, it's, it's amazing how much difference it makes. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
I, I just have a question for city manager. Is there, is there any update at all on the sheriff's investigation of the police department?
None whatsoever. I watch, I come in at night, I come in on Saturdays and Sundays checking my email.
All right, well, we...
And nothing at all.
We, we have got to, we have got to do something with that. I mean, this is, this started February 1st, and, I mean, I'm not blaming you for the sheriff's department's investigation, that's not what I'm doing. But we, we have got to do something. I mean, we've got three officers that are on administrative leave that we're paying, sit at home.
Yep.
And we've got to have some sort of action.
Chief Harris has, I, I don't make any comment, I just listen to what he replies to me, that he has checked, I think, three times lately. And they, I kept hoping we'd hear something this week.
Well, I, I think as a city, we may not need to wait on the sheriff's investigation to be complete before we take whatever action we choose to take. I think as the administration needs to take some sort of action. And then let the chips fall where they may when the sheriff's report comes back, because three people sitting home for months makes no sense to me. So we need to, we need to figure out whatever action needs to be taken, and it needs to happen.
Okay.
I mean, that's my, that's my opinion, I'm just one person. I, I'm not, I'm, of course, I'm speaking not for the board in its entirety, but from, from my perspective, it, something needs to happen.
Has anyone contacted the sheriff and asked about a timeline?
Chief Harris asked.
What kind of answer did he get?
Had one more interview to do, and they were going to do it on Monday, and hopefully they would get the report out pretty soon.
I've heard that for two weeks now.
Well, I was going to say, I talked to him two weeks ago, and, of course, you know, it's real easy to sit here and say, we want you to do our investigation, and you have to hurry up. I agree with what you're saying, and I hate paying people, but, you know, we've asked somebody to do investigation, and then, you know, they're using their resources and time, even though it's costing us, I'm sure they're, I'll double check with them this week on my vacation, and we'll see if we can't get it speeded up for you. But, I mean, you just got to realize, when you ask somebody to do something, you're kind of on their timeline.
Oh, and I'm not, and I'm not saying, I'm not blaming the sheriff's department, because they are, they're, it's obviously a gratuity to us. But I, I'm just saying, let's take that out of the equation right now, and let's, and when that invest, when that report comes back, if, if something needs to happen, then, then it will. But at this point, the way I see it, we got three people sitting home, it's been sitting home for months, it's costing the taxpayers money, it's a cloud hanging over the PD. We need, inaction is, is just not acceptable anymore. I mean, we, you know, no blame on the sheriff, I'm just saying something needs to happen. That's, in my opinion, so.
Do you want him to talk in your...
No, I've just got a question for him about something entirely different. Wayne, what's the status on the paving at the park for the parking lot and the school room?
The engineer, you know, he's in his classroom, and I think...
Okay. Just trying to keep up to date on, thank you.
Okay. City attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Crutcher.
No, you go ahead. I've got a question for him. Go ahead.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay.
Have you talked to our property assessor?
He left me a message and said that it, the certified tax rate was pretty much, he couldn't give me a hundred percent guarantee, but 90 cents.
I talked to him at a fundraiser tonight, and that's exactly what he said, it's going to be 90 cents.
And so he's anticipating soon to have, have the final, final numbers. But he, he said that, that he doesn't see it not being 90 cents.
I think it's next week is what he told them.
Yeah.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you have any?
Well, just, that was right there. I appreciate all the hard work everybody does. I was at a, thank for the Boys and Girls Club tonight, and I apologize being late. Got it quick as I could.
Okay, thank you. I just want to close with a few comments. I, I respect citizens' rights to come up here and voice their opinion, and I know sometimes that's the only way you feel like maybe you have a full attention of an audience to listen as far as the Board of Commissioners goes. But I just ask, in the future, that we're respectful to the fact of that personal attacks are not necessary. And I understand, I, I feel like I appreciate and understand Mr. Brooks enough that his display of telling the story was to make us realize how did this sound? You know, where some things seem so bizarre, you know, that we can almost make a, a movie or something out of it. And I understand what he was trying to do, but, and the fact of, we are just people trying to serve, trying to do the best job we can. Not everybody's going to like it, not everybody's going to appreciate it. There's been many things I've missed over the years. Missed my husband's 25 year, or 20, I went to 25, but, you know, I've missed penning where he, for service, I've missed things for my children. And it's hard sometimes to feel so personally attacked. And I know that it probably wasn't the appropriate thing for Mr. Johnson, and I'm not going to be the judge to get up and leave in the middle of a meeting. But I will tell you that his sons are playing ball, and I can understand that he felt like, why should I sit here and take this? For that being said, it is his prerogative and his right to do so. And I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the audience and just make it very clear that sometimes, even though you're passionate and you feel like your voice needs to be heard, we need to be respected for what we give up for you. And I know some of you might feel like that what we do, or we're not very respectful or in our actions, and you feel justified, but as the mayor, I would like to declare, if we can't go up there and give our passionate feelings without targeting people, then I think that, you know, I, it goes both ways. And, you know, sometimes you just have to realize that we are people, and there's appropriate ways to handle things. Other thought for tonight, I too wish the, I too wish the investigation is to end, but it is what it is, and I'll keep following up with the, the sheriff. And, yeah, I agree, it's time to move forward and try to move the city in the right direction. And with that being said, I hope everybody has a, a good night, and if I can get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.